...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Please note that all councilors are here except Councilor Lourenzum. Any announcements of participation? Any citizens' statements in position?
Yeah. First person is Jeremy Bidwell.
Jeremy Bidwell, 61 Hoskins Road in Bloomfield. I appeared here a year ago roughly, talking about a culvert issue on Hoskins Road, which you may recall. And with the budget coming up, I was curious if there was any provision in the budget for this culvert project, which was indicated to me might be the case, and perhaps Town Manager might be able to identify if there's a line item in the capital portion of the budget.
There is $100,000 included in the capital budget for drainage improvement for four different projects. Hoskins Road is one of them.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure what the cost estimate is for the Hoskins Road project, but I think that $100,000 was put in to make sure it was large enough to take care of that particular project.
Okay. I met with the town engineer and the deputy town engineer on Friday, and they had not yet got a quote, which I was hoping would have been done by now so you'd have a number for that, but I would think that would be the next step.
The estimates, I believe, were in the high-five-figure range area. And of course, you know, the money has to be approved as a budget, you know?
Sure.
And the town meeting is being held on May 6th at Newfield High School at 7:00 PM. And if the budget is approved by the council at that time, the money would be in the budget. But of course, we can't spend it until July 1st.
Correct. Okay, so it sounds like there's something in the budget for that particular culvert, then? That's my takeaway?
There's four of them, and Hoskins Road is the first one on the list.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I'm actually here representing the Wittenberry Land Trust. I believe that the council members received an invitation to the annual, fourth annual Wine and Dine fundraiser for the Wittenberry Land Trust, a local 501(c)(3) organization. But my main purpose today is to make sure that the people of the public, including those watching on television, public access, are aware of this local charity that is looking to preserve natural resources here in our community, and making sure that everybody is aware of that. The fundraiser will be held April 27th. Tickets are available for the public to purchase, but please get them in as soon as possible. It's a wonderful event that promotes community connectivity, that makes sure that you're meeting people here in our community that benefits our community. If you're not familiar with the Wittenberry Land Trust, just if you go to wittenberylandtrust.org, there's plenty of information in regards to the mission of the 501(c)(3) Wittenberry Land Trust, but mostly protection of farmland, and, well, I'll just read it, protection of natural resources, soil-water conservation of farmland, and appropriate urban landscapes, as well as connectivity with other community features. It's a wonderful organization that is right here in Bloomfield and benefits Bloomfield. So we just wanted to make sure that the public was aware, that they can support this organization, and obviously, the council members as well have been notified with invitations for this event, and I know I'm going to see a lot of you there. So, thank you again, John DeHoyas with the Wittenberry Land Trust.
I have two short presentations to the Town Council. First presentation is to Councilman Joseph Merritt. I would like to thank you, I'm a Democrat, that's the theme of the blue, and the red is for Republican Party. That's Democrat Party and Republican Party. Councilman Joseph Merritt, I would like to thank you and your party for fulfilling my campaign promise in 2000, and that promise was the renovation of Bloomfield's five schools, and my added promise was school uniforms. My second presentation, I'm making this because I need, I want this to be a record, the Town Council would need this in the future. I started to drive over it, and I decided to make the announcement. Upon my death, I bequeathed a sum of $100,000 to the Bloomfield Senior Center. The said bequeath shall thereafter name the Harriet Howard Senior Center Donation Fund. The donation funds shall be allocated and distributed at a rate not to exceed $5,000 per calendar year for the next 20 years to fund any leisure Bloomfield Senior Center events or activities. The donation fund is for the enjoyment and benefit of senior citizens 55 years and older who frequent Bloomfield Senior Center and live in the town of Bloomfield, Connecticut, to enjoy its various community programs, games, and entertainment. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
(applause)
Miss Harriet?
Yes.
Thank you so very much, but I really hope and pray that it doesn't come too soon. But thank you, ma'am. God bless you.
She said for the town, it was to do with the schools. You were part of that whole process.
You have to put this in your car and take a home now.
The renovation of the new school? I mean, not the new schools, the schools, the school, all the schools. Did you remember anything about that? You seem a little shocked.
(inaudible)
Can everybody hear me okay? Great. So Quentin Johnson, 85 Woodland Avenue, and I am here to say that I think that Councilwoman Waterhouse is amazing and beautiful, and I love her very much.
Love you too, ma'am.
Bless you.
Of course.
Larry Pleasant.
Hello, Larry Pleasant, 16 Old Village Road. Thank you, Harriet. Thank you very much. I was going to add to it, I remember that building committee thing because I was one of those three councilmembers who sat for three years on that study, because that building committee thing that, Joe, that's for you, that's for you. Anyway, I said three minutes, I don't want to waste my time on that type of stuff. Distressful stuff. All the noise in the news, lack of clarity about who did what, where and why, and how, assertions that of mismanagement, non-use of funds, blah, 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 blah. So, I'm going to put my Town Councilman hat on, because I did this for 20 years. Oh, you want me to shout? I usually shout enough, but okay, 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 can you hear me now? Let me put my council hat on. So the question is, if the board did something that the council thinks is inappropriate, the question is, what is the policy? And I'd like you folks to find out, what is the policy, and what do we need to do in the future so that such misuse or surprises doesn't occur? When folks use money because they got to rob Peter to pay Paul, you know, like this Trump thing, you know? I don't care what you say in your budget, I'm going to do this anyway. And that's what we really have here, I think, a use of funds regardless of how folks thought they should have been allocated. Now, that's the impression I got, you can correct me later on if I'm wrong. But anyway, the deal is this, what's the policy? What are you going to do in the future to make sure it doesn't happen again? That's the most important thing to me. Question, do you have to even fill the fund back up right away? I doubt it, seriously. You have to worry about the risk, right? Figure out the risk. Don't react to these folks. This is, I mean, for 20 years, board came to council, oh, death and doom, council is this, council is that. I never was on a council where they did this, okay? Be upset, but lead us through. Why? We have a superintendent, we have a town manager that may be leaving, we have a superintendent, from what I heard here, who may be leaving, we have a new town council, you all may not even be here next year. We have a new Board of Education. Everything's changing totally in this town. And then we have a historic 11%, we have a 7% increase. What is the 7% overall in the budget? The board's and yours is what? Well, here's the deal, if I'm off by a quarter percent, it doesn't matter. It's still a hunking number, a big number that you guys don't usually like to deal with. So I'm here to support the council and say, don't panic, don't do anything stupid. Reason it out, and if you got, and you have until the fourth quarter to reconcile anything anyway, do your job. And thank you for the job you've done so far.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. My name is Michelle Benoni. I'm Vice Chair of the Economic Development Commission and also a member of the Design Review Board, but I'm here before you tonight, speaking as a resident and a taxpayer. My comments are about the council budget deliberation as you go forward. As you review the proposed Town of Bloomfield budget before you for 2019-20, I offer some comments that I hope will prove thought-provoking to you during your deliberations. The main object of my presence is to say that I believe the most important part of the budget consideration are the services provided and those who pay the bills for the Town of Bloomfield, residents and businesses. How and what you ask them to pay is in their interest as your constituents. They are, after all, why you are here, to do the work of the people. To quote my favorite philosopher, "To not speak is to speak; to not act is to act." So, to begin, if you as a council are proposing a property tax increase for 2019-20 at the end of your deliberations, I ask you to think, who can afford to pay it? Whose interests are benefited? There are important choices to make. It's my suggestion that as a taxpaying resident of Bloomfield, that all categories of the budget are on the table, excepting public safety, mandated police department, fire department, and critical health department issues would not be on the table. Other budget considerations, however, would be. Only town-sponsored projects that are funded and underway proceed. Let's complete them at last. Freeze all compensation not subject to bargaining unit requirement. Departments to propose reductions across the board for all expenditures using a 10%, 15%, 20% budget scenario, each providing a scenario to meet mandated service requirements. The final budget determination of what percentage to use will be your choice at the end of your process. Now that I have your attention, let me share some information about why these considerations to contain expenditures might be helpful to consider. Some unknown impacts on the 2019-20 budget. Do we know how the town will be impacted by reduced state to municipalities yet? Bloomfield receives 85.3% of its revenue from local taxes and 12.4% from the state of Connecticut. Will town be required to contribute to the teachers' pension funds? Is the amount estimated? What would the impact of the proposed $15 and $1 minimum wage increase be on the town budget? We need to be prepared to face financial challenges when we get from the state of Connecticut that may visit financial burdens on Bloomfield, even though Bloomfield had little if anything to do with the decisions that created them. Known potential impacts on the budget, increasing indebtedness to pay service on bonds while contemplating the issuance of more bonds. Note, the Town of Windsor allows a maximum of $10 million worth of bonding per year. Does Bloomfield have a limit? The full faith and credit of the Bloomfield taxpayers guarantees the payment for general obligation bonds. Bloomfield has a lot of bond debt for a town of 20,000-plus people. Who can afford to pay these taxes? Yes, ma'am?
Would that be the buzzer that went off? Yeah, for a minute, so if you could just, in conclusion? I'm sorry.
You won't get any of the plan proposal?
Right. Can you, um, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Somebody give us a call.
I'd rather not.
Okay, so someone else is going to finish reading for her?
Madam Mayor?
Could we use discretion? It's your discretion to either allow the speaker to continue. I think she has some valuable points that are critical for this council as we deliberate.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second that motion. I agree.
Thank you.
How many other people do we have on the list? She's the last one?
Okay. I will try not to waste any of your time. I'll be brief. Thank you, sir. Who can afford to pay more taxes? In Bloomfield, we pay approximately 126% of what many other towns pay in property tax. In 2015, for a $200,000 house, Bloomfield taxpayers paid more than Avon, Canton, Farmington, and only $400 less than Simsbury. To justify such property tax rates, we would have to have premium schools and leisure services, be competing for a best place to live category and other high-profile claims. While we are working on these things, we currently don't have such bragging rights. The 2018 Partnership for Strong Communities provides that the average Bloomfield household median income is $82,139. They have a mortgage average of $1,828 per month. So, then, consider tax creep. It's not as rude as it sounds, it's the yearly percentage increase in property taxes, occasional mileage increases, that result in serious property tax increases over time. By adding 2% here and 3% there, thinking about another, well, it's really not so bad, percentage this year, check out the math on this over the past years in Bloomfield. A seemingly small yearly increase results in great costs to taxpayers. According to Alice United Way Report for 2018, 35% of Connecticut households are struggling to support themselves. 27% are underemployed or undercompensated or both. How can we help Bloomfield renters who wish to become Bloomfield homeowners, and homeowners who wish to buy up and stay in Bloomfield, not by perpetuating yearly property tax increases? We want those who live in Bloomfield to have housing choices. I would hope that Bloomfield taxpayers could use an equivalent of any property tax increase to benefit their families and homes, rather than having increased property taxes swallow their opportunity. Retiring in Bloomfield. The Town of Bloomfield is an aging community. As retirement is contemplated, 25% of the population are renters, 1,500 residents have incomes of less than $7,150, and 465 homes are vacant. For many, preparedness for retirement is an issue. This is per the Essex Financial Planning Agency. Connecticut is one of at least 13 states that tax social security payments. Federal COLA adjustments simply do not help much. You get the retirement picture. Increased revenue through population growth is not likely for us. Bloomfield will not gain population according to the Yukon Data Center and the U.S. Census. In 2015, the population will be 2,499. The Hartford Business Journal projected the 2040 population will be 2,152. Money is leaving Connecticut. Regarding wealth transfer, the Hartford Current tells us that 41% of high-income residents do not plan to spend retirement in Connecticut. Bloomfield's revenue will be affected by this outflow of revenue. The 215-16 residents left Connecticut with $6 billion of personal wealth. Incoming revenue that same year was $3.36 billion. Incoming revenue to Connecticut and business climate, particularly here in Bloomfield, the cost of starting a business in Connecticut is 9% higher in Connecticut, partly due to our high energy costs. Forbes Magazine rates Connecticut business climate among the 10 worst in the United States. I can attest by the way, that by the way of this council and the Economic Development Commission, Bloomfield is endeavoring to attract new businesses and retain existing businesses, with some notable success in spite of these limitations. So why am I burdening you with all of these financially dire facts and circumstances? Surely not to depress you or to portray Bloomfield as having problems that many other towns in Connecticut don't also share. It's to impress upon you, once again, and I'm sure you already know, that you were elected to serve the people. The people of Bloomfield are number one. I speak to you as someone who has been in your shoes and felt the weight of your responsibility. There are a lot of things about living in any town that are hard to quantify and measure. Budgets are not such a thing. How this budget benefits or in some cases provides financial hardship to those who live and do business here needs to be of paramount concern to those who have been elected to serve. In the Our Vision of Bloomfield flyer that I received during the last campaign, that's this little number, under fiscal responsibility, the last item reads, and I quote, "Our goal is to try and reduce property taxes, giving citizens more funds to spend at local businesses and on improving their homes and businesses." It was a good goal then, and it's a great goal now. Paying my property taxes. On my way out of Town Hall when I paid my property tax in December 2018 at Town Hall, and my property assessment has already been raised, thank you very much, I stopped to talk with another taxpayer, as I always do. I was acquainted with, I was not acquainted with this person, but I asked anyway, "Well, did you do the deed?" Referring to the tax payment we both had just made. She replied with a sigh, "Yes, and you don't know what it took to scrape it together." I haven't forgotten her. I suggest you don't either. In that vein, I submit to you, at no additional charge, a campaign slogan for all of you who are intending to be reelected, as I understand there's a council election this autumn. The campaign slogan is three short words, "No New Taxes." You can even employ the slogan now as you deliberate your budget. Thank you for your kindness in letting me speak.
The Board of Education, the state is in the process of, the state is in the process of now offloading teacher retirement benefits to municipalities like ours. While we heard about year one and year two from luster senators and whatnot, I think they should give us better projections, because I think from a planning perspective, you guys got to know more. And so I would ask you to press these guys on what their projections are next five to 10, and I know, because without that, you guys can't do anything with all the stuff that's going on in town. And the other thing, would you do a quick word on the Town Manager search process, because I hear we're going to have some people coming in on Friday? Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have a report from subcommittees, Community Services, Deputy Mayor Kurt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Community Service Subcommittee met on March 12 at 6 o'clock. I'm going to report, I'm going to give a quick summary from each department, just so everyone can get a sense of what's going on. From CEC, there's the Fourth Annual Shred Day will be held on Saturday, April 13, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They will also be, they also have a Take-Two Recycling Services available onsite to accept unwanted electronics like old television sets, printers, computers, telephones, et cetera. Also, there will be a free solar and energy workshop on April 23 at 6:30 p.m. through 8:30 p.m. This will be a lecture by energy sponsored by Earthlight and Homestead at the Bloomfield Town Hall, Conference Room 5. This event offers opportunity for individuals to talk with vetted contractors about their energy questions and needs. Moving on to Social and Youth Services, the annual Renters Rebate Program for elderly and Totally Disabled will begin on April 1 through October 1, 2019. The maximum income for a single individual is roughly around $36,000. For married couples, it's $43,900. The second item that was discussed is to request an appointment. Please call Social Service and Youth Service at 860-242-1895. That number is 860-242-1895. Onto the Beautification Committee. There are a variety of programs occurring in collaboration with Leisure Service for Earth Day, which is April 22. The committee will plant lilac bush next to the town, sorry, lilac bush, I was just asking my colleague exactly what it looks like. Bush next to the Town Hall entry on the north side as a project for, as a project for the day. Leisure Service, the new banners for the spring season will be ordered for placement on Park Avenue, Blue Hills Avenue, and Bloomfield Avenue. The summer publication of, outline of a variety of programs have been released for distribution. Every household in town should receive one, receive a copy pretty soon in the mail. Senior Service on April 1, 2019 at 10:00, 3:00 a.m. through, it's a 10-week agent ministry program will begin during that timeframe. On April 16 at 12:00 noon, the Conversation Project Made Easy will be held to discuss topics such as final burial arrangements, power of attorney, roles, and medical directives. On May 1, it's a six-week Bloomfield Citizen Academy will begin. Next item, we kind of, we had discussions and update regarding Celebrate Bloomfield. Celebrate Bloomfield is scheduled to take place on June 6 through 9 of this year, June 6 through June 9. Several events include volunteer reception, Second Annual Mayor's Ball. I heard the first one was a blast. I missed it. I'm looking forward to this upcoming Mayor's Ball, so I would invite everyone to come out. I don't have the information as far as the ticket goes, but hopefully, later on tonight, the mayor could give us a little bit more insight in that. And there's a Paint 'n Zoo, Vender's Musical Selection from the Bloomfield High School Choir, and DJ Buck from Hot 93.7. Actually, they were going to hire me, but I think there were some final decisions made on that. There also, the last item on the list is the 2019 Back-to-School Fun Fair, which is usually a fun event. The Subcommittee for this event proposed a different twist this year to the Back-to-School Fair celebration due to the new human service facility. I think they're going to have an event, they're going to open up the building to the community, and they're going to have various stations, and so, within the new building, we'll give everyone an opportunity to come out, embrace their new facility, and at the same time, meet their neighbors and have a good time. And that's the end of my report, Madam Mayor.
Admin Education, too, please.
There's nothing tonight for admin education. The next meeting is April 1, Monday, April 1 at 6:30 in Conference Room 5.
Again, nothing for finance tonight. We canceled the March meeting due to the budget, that's what we're all focusing on, and the next meeting will be the April meeting on April 15.
Same thing. The next meeting for public safety will be April 8, and I hope, feel that we can have a report for the communication system.
Thank you.
Committee on Committee and Names in Economic Development, Council Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Committee on Committees also did not meet last month, but this was because there were not that many positions that are going unfilled.
Actually, they were going to hire me, but, uh, I think there were some final decisions made on that. There also, the last item on the list is the 2019 Back-to-School Fun Fair, which is usually a fun event. The Sub, the Subcommittee, um, for this event, uh, proposed a different twist this year to the Back-to-School Fair celebration due to the new, new human service facility. I think they're going to have an event, they're going to open up the building to the community, and they're going to have various stations, and so within the new building, we'll give everyone an opportunity to come out, embrace their new facility, and at the same time, meet their neighbors and have a good time. And that's the end of my report, Madam Mayor.
Admin Education, too, please.
There's nothing tonight for Admin Education. The next meeting is, uh, April 1st, Monday, April 1st at 6:30 in Conference Room 5.
Again, nothing for Finance tonight. We canceled the, um, the March meeting due to the budget. Uh, that's what we're all focusing on, and the next meeting will be the April meeting on April 15th.
Same thing. Uh, the next meeting for Public Safety will be April 8th, and I hope, uh, feel that we can have a report for the communication system.
Thank you.
Committee on Committee and Names in Economic Development, Council Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Committee and Committees also did not meet last month, but this was because there were not that many positions that are going unfilled right now on our boards and commissions. Uh, we've done pretty well with that. Our next meeting will be on the 15th of April. The Land Use and Economic Development Committee also had to, had to cancel their meeting because of the budget deliberations last, this month. But we're meeting, we're trying to get a meeting on April 3rd, uh, sometime before our Planning Director goes on vacation. It's another crazy month with, uh, meetings, uh, twice a week, uh, for the budget, so we're trying to, uh, put one together for the 3rd. It might be a little bit later in the month, there'll be a special meeting. Thank you.
Golf, Council Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Golf Committee met tonight, and we've been having a series of meetings by a committee of the Golf Committee, uh, doing, dealing with the request for a proposal for Management Services for Wittenberry Hills Golf Course. The, we're going through this review process, and we should be going out with the, uh, request for proposal in April, and, uh, should be, uh, by, we hope to have the decision by, uh, August, and hopefully for the first council meeting in August, uh, to appoint the new group. The purpose of the timing is mainly that if it, certainly if it is a new, different group, we, they will need all that time before the, the next golf seasons. Now, our current, uh, management group, which we're very happy with, we're doing this because it's fitting and proper that we do it, more than not to reflect any dissatisfaction with the current group, but they've been in for 15 years, and, uh, and it's appropriate that we, we go through some form of review, and that's what we're doing. Um, also, uh, we, tonight, discussed the, um, for example, the, the lot that we were going to buy in front of the golf course is still tied up with, uh, banks, so that has not become available. Uh, so that's just been stretched out. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Friday night, Joe, Sandy Koffler. I'm sorry. Sandy Koffler, what is the ball called? Oh.
I bet, I forgot the most important thing. The golf course opens the 29th Friday, and, uh, starting at breakfast at 8:30, and the mayor's going to, uh, launch a ball for 400 yards.
Hit the first tee shot.
Madam Mayor, pick it up and just. And, uh, so I, I, I hope everybody plans to come out. It's going to be a beautiful, warm day, and it won't rain.
All right. He said launch, so if I can pick it up and throw it, White Council McLeary, it's launch. Um, Council New Business, 1819, Act 50, considering taking action regarding tax refund.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, I will put this up on the board so people can see what we're voting on. Um, I move that we approve the, uh, the following list of tax, uh, uh, refunds, uh, made by the Assessor and approved by the Planner.
Is there any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, I would like to add something to the agenda.
Actually, uh, point of order, please. Uh, the, anything added to the agenda needs to be added to the agenda before the Business Section starts, so you're too late.
Yep, that's correct, Madam Mayor.
Well, that was certainly a good move.
It's, uh, you know, do your homework.
Okay.
So that's why you rushed into the first section, I see. Thank you. I, I actually told the mayor I had something to add to the agenda, so.
And the mayor said okay, so I didn't know when you were supposed to add it from when you weren't supposed to add it, Council Mayor. I'm so very sorry. If I had known, I would have said something different, but I didn't.
I think that was about as.
Uh, we're going to have the report now from our Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have too much to report, just a reminder to everybody that on April 2nd, excuse me, at 7:00 p.m., uh, we have the public hearing on the, on the budget, and that'll be here in the Town Council Chambers at Town Hall, Building 5, or, or in Conference Room, uh, really the Council Chambers. And then on May 6th at 7:00 p.m. at Bloomfield High School, we have the actual, uh, Town, Annual Town and Budget Meeting that will be held at 7:00 p.m. So, I also would like to report that, uh, the Board, the West Hartford Bloomfield Board of Health had their quarterly meeting, uh, last week. They approved their budget and also named their auditor for the, uh, prior fiscal year, so those will be coming forward. Within the Health District budget is a sizable increase for a new code enforcement person, which both West Hartford and Bloomfield have supported. That completes my report.
Thank you. Um, so we do continue, sorry, we do continue our budget sessions on tomorrow, Tuesday, um, Tuesday, the 26th, the 28th. Uh, the Town Managers talked about the 2nd. Um, so it's really important that you are a part of the budget session, um, the process. I thank, um, Michelle, if I can, Mrs. Bononi, for coming out and speaking about your concerns. Everyone can come out and speak about their concerns. Mr. Pleasant, I thank you as well for lending your voice to the process. It is a heavy weight that the council is under, um, this year, but we believe that at the end of the day, regardless of our, um, differences of opinions, that we will make the best fiscal decision for our town. Um, but we are also encouraging everyone to be a part of that process. On April 2nd, come out, voice your concerns, and we will take everyone's concerns into consideration as we deliberate. I know that some have questioned the, uh, the shortness of our agenda. Um, and to be honest with you, I think we're so focused on the budget that unless something was of utmost importance, um, or something that needed to be handled right away, we thought it was best that we focus. So for all those out there who are saying that there's nothing going on, there's a lot going on, but there's some more important things that we have to deal with right away, and the budget is one of them. The next important, big item that we have to deal with is the Town Manager. We know a few months ago, um, we had chosen an executive search firm. That executive search firm came, they had meetings with the town at, at different places, at different times to get your input on what you were looking for as, in the Town Manager. They've spoken to the council, um, they sent the, uh, RFP out far and wide in their, uh, sphere, um, of potential candidates. We had 11 potential candidates. The council had Skype interviews with five. We narrowed it down to two. Um, we were able to ask questions and get background information, and we, I believe, picked the two most qualified. Thank you. The two most qualified candidates, most appealing candidates, and they will be here on Friday. Hold on, guys, hold on. So we're asking you to come out on Friday evening at 7:00 p.m. to hear them. They're going to make a 10-minute presentation each, and then you're going to have some time to interact with them. If, for some reason, Friday night doesn't work for you, on Saturday morning, I believe at 9:00 a.m., they will be here again to make that same presentation and to have interaction. We're asking you to please come out. It would be horrible for us to make a decision and have our residents say we never had an opportunity. We're giving you an opportunity. Please, please take advantage of it. This will be one of the most important decisions that we make for our town. Has far-reaching, far-reaching. Um, it will also be televised, but we would prefer that you come here.
Yeah, not everyone can hold.
And, and, and be a part of the process. Deputy Mayor says that not, not everyone can hold, but come, we'll make room. Um, I think that might be it for me. Um, so at this time, uh, we're going to do our approval of minutes from March 11th, 2019. So moved in second. Is there any, um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I abstain, Madam Mayor. I wasn't.
One abstention?
I abstain as well.
Two abstentions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries with two abstentions. At this time, we'll have Council comments. We'll start with Councilor Waterhouse.
Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight, and we will see you during the budget process.
Councilor Marshall Neely.
First, I'd like to thank Harriet Howard for her presentation. I'd like to thank Harriet Howard for the donation that she gave to the senior center. Uh, that is phenomenal, and I'm, I'm so glad that you came to the council meeting and presented that. Uh, we don't know unless we know. I'd like to thank, uh, Harriet Howard for her presentation to my friend here, Joe Merritt, and I'm sure he'll do something like that as well. Wanted to, um, note that, um, uh, on Thursday, Bloomfield High School will be celebrating the football team and, uh, at 6:00 p.m. And I know that we have budget meetings, but, uh, our football team did a phenomenal job this, this year, and recognizing them is something that needs to happen, so, um, you know, just want to let everyone know that that is going to happen on Thursday. Larry Pleasant and Michelle, thank you for your presentations. Well-needed, much respected, much respected. And, uh, I want to thank Phil Schenk for his guidance and the conversation that I had with you today. So much appreciated. Wanted to thank you for that, and you know what I'm talking about. And, um, and lastly, the council does a lot of work, and some things we agree on, some things we don't agree on. And, um, it's, it's a tough job, but someone has to do it, and I would implore everyone from this community to get involved with what's going on. Pay attention, follow the dollar, because once you follow the dollar, you can understand better what's happening. I did hear clearly what's going on with, you know, the concerns with taxes. I, too, am concerned with the taxes and keeping them at a lower, lower level, keeping them stable. It is difficult. It is difficult. One last thing that I want to, want to say is, I went to a, a meeting, a forum in Hartford, and, and I don't know whether or not I agree or disagree, but the forum was with regard to the legalization that, that the state of Connecticut is looking at legalization of cannabis. I don't know if I'm for it or against it, but our state representatives were the ones who actually, um, hosted that forum, and they would like to do a forum in the town of Bloomfield. Uh, they recommended, or they, they, they asked whether or not they could do something in the town of Bloomfield. I don't, I don't know if I'm for it or against it, but I think I need to know more about what's going on, and I think that the town should know more about what's going on so that we can be well-informed. So I'm not saying, uh, you should promote it, I don't, I'm not saying that you should cancel it out, I'm just saying, if this forum is to take place, and it looks like it's going to, you need to be involved to hear what's going on. And with that, I'm going to say, thank you so much, and have a great night.
Councilor Merritt.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank Harriet Howard. I was overawed by this big pot of flowers, and I, uh, but I'd like to accept it only on behalf of the other council members, I'm looking at Larry Pleasant and those that had been involved over that whole period. Uh, we have done, I think, a laudatory, laudatory job of, uh, renewing our schools at relatively low expense, and other towns around us face that same chore. We have it behind us, and I don't think people appreciate how important that is, uh, that we have done it, and we've also are doing it with our town buildings now, that we finished that up, as we can afford to. And we are really ahead of the game with everybody around us, so that was quite a remarkable achievement, and, uh, it required an awful lot of tussling as we went. We certainly did, but, uh, it was done at a, we didn't build new buildings, we renewed all of them. Uh, most, most of our buildings are, are fixed up, and I don't think anybody would say they're second-rate, just because they're rebuilds and not brand-new. They did, excuse me, they did an excellent job. I'd also like to say tonight that what I was about to do was, uh, and I had talked about it with the entire council, I emailed everybody about it, and, uh, was intending to introduce the agenda, a, um, emergency, not emergency, but unbudgeted, uh, expenditure from our reserves. One of the things we are rich with and probably in excess with is undesigned reserves. We have a rainy day fund that probably beats everybody's rainy day fund all over the state, and that's great most of the time, but, uh, when you have a rainy day, that's the time to use it, and the Board of Ed is certainly having a rainy day. And the beauty of using the money from the rainy day fund is we would still have enough left, so it would be more than required for our, our bonding, uh, uh, rating, and more than anybody requires. So it's really almost a question of why we have so much. I can, I go back to the days where we had line-to-line budgeting, uh, when we had no reserves at all. Now we have reserves all over the place, and sometimes you have to have them, and this is one of those times. And when there's a time to, to use it, then you should use it, and, and it's a time we should be doing it. And what I was going to ask for tonight, and I know I had at least five supporters of that, was, uh, to, uh, get a, have a hearing, have the public comment on it, wouldn't be a final vote tonight, it would be something we could think about over the next two weeks, and have a hearing on it in two weeks, and, um, I think it would have been very beneficial because it would be an expenditure that we can certainly afford, that would not affect us in any way, uh, crediting, and it would allow us to give them the money they need now, uh, and not put it in the budget, where it would be a repetitive thing. So I, I would, I was very disappointed that by, um, implementing a parliamentary motion, they orchestrated a, not allowing that to come up, and I think it would have benefited everybody. I, I was hoping that everybody would support it. I don't see a downside to it, and it would have made the budget process much pleasanter, and we would have been allowed to go ahead without having that 1.3 million muddy up the water, so that should not be part of a budget increase. It's to fill a hole that exists today and not something that we go into the base for future increases. Thank you.
Councilor Merritt? Councilor Merritt? I have looked into my emails, and I have not seen an email from you in regards to this. The first time that I heard that you wanted to add something to the agenda was this afternoon when I sat in my seat, and I said, "Okay." I'm not quite sure where you have five votes from, but that's okay. Once again, I do not like leaving things out there in the air with a bad projection or an incorrect projection. Councilor McLeary.
No comment. Just please come out to the budget hearings and make your voice heard, because this is a very, very difficult year. Um, like Ms. Bononi said, uh, we don't know what the state is going to do, um, with their unfunded mandates, uh, consolidation of regionalism of schools potentially, tolls, there's a lot of taxes coming down from the state, so please, 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 please come out and let us hear your voice, because a voiceless people is a hopeless people. And so if you really need some stuff, please come out and let us know what your priorities are. Thank you.
Councilor Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's come out to, uh, comment on a variety of things, especially the budget, especially tax increases, especially fiscal, uh, responsibility, because that is something this council, uh, or the majority of this council, anyway, is certainly devoted to. Uh, we believe in honest budgeting, and we believe in, uh, transparent budgeting. So, um, thank you for your comments, and, um, they are, they are well-taken. Um, I'd also like to point out that part of the responsibility of anyone being on a town council is to do the work, and I want to make it clear that, though it is parliamentary procedure, but is also not meant to, um, to be little games with people, but you should read the rules and know what you're doing. I would also point out that to add a motion to the, uh, to add an agenda item to the agenda after the agenda has been printed requires six votes, not five. after the agenda has been printed requires six votes, not five. You may want to take that into consideration also, Councilor Merritt. Finally, and again, in the sake of understanding information, I would, I would ask that all councilors make themselves aware of what the actual issues are before they start speaking on them. Thank you.
Councilor DiLorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say on a more fun note that, speaking of golf, Wintonbury Golf hosted a St. Patrick's Day party last week, and it was not as well-attended as I had hoped it would be, but Councilor Merritt was there, so that was always good. And, you know, it was an enjoyable time. The food was great, and we had live entertainment, and that was, that was a lot of fun, and I think everybody who was there enjoyed it. The other thing I want to talk about is Congressman John Larson was with us last Monday, and that was an amazing turnout over at 330 Park in the senior center. We had a lot of people there, and it was nice to meet Congressman Larson and to hear what he had to say about social security. So I think if you did miss that presentation and you are interested in it, you might want to contact his office to get some information about that. Finally, the last thing I'll say is, I know Councilor Merritt was going to introduce an item to the agenda tonight, and I had planned to support that. So the only, the only difference is I did not discuss a public hearing as part of that item on the agenda. My thought was that that item would continue on through the budget process, that we would discuss it. It would either be referred to committee or would continue on through the process of the budget deliberations when we get to the adds and the delete. So I certainly plan to support that and have that discussion and make sure that everyone is aware of what is going on. So unfortunately, we didn't get that on the agenda, but we do have other opportunities to further discuss, so thank you.
Councilor Mann?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have very much to talk about, except the budget. The budget is probably the most important thing that town develops. It's how we spend our money in the coming year. It's how things get done or don't get done. It's how things happen in your neighborhood or don't, and it's very important for you to participate in the process. That's all we're asking for. So you have the dates. It's Tuesdays and Thursdays for the next couple of weeks. We'll be meeting here in Town Hall. You can watch it on BATV at home or come and participate, as we have some wonderful citizens that showed up tonight and really added something to the discussion. I was somewhat taken aback by an action to impose somebody's idea about the budget before the council had its chance to deliberate, as we have a process for that. I would encourage Councilor Merritt to share more readily if he has ideas with other people on the council. It is a deliberative body. It's supposed to be, and if you think that no one wants to talk to you, well, that's something you have to deal with. Talk to us. We're all here, and we all want to participate.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The silliness, because we're not here to play games. We're here to do a job. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Well, with that being said, once again, please come out and be a part of the process. We are Bloomfield residents. Whatever decision we make will affect us and our families, so we take these decisions very, very seriously. It's not a campaign. It's making the best fiscal decision for our residents. It's not jockeying. It's not trying to prove a point. It's trying to make the best fiscal decision possible. And I want to thank Michelle, Ms. Bononi, for reading the promise that was made, because it's, a man is, a man is only as good as his word, and thank you for reminding us of our word. We will try to make the best fiscal decision for the residents of our town. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for lending your voice to this meeting. Thank you in advance for lending your voice to the process. You people who are here, as I always say, you're the real MVP. Thank you very much, and good night. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Pass unanimously. Thank you.